Nothing wrong with the orders you go, right?
Yeah.
We're getting ready to get started, thank you very much. I'll see you. Yes, we are getting ready to get started. We're going to have public testimony at this particular time. The following people have signed up to address the board. Please come forward and you will have three minutes. Sharita Turner, Mick Raven, Debbie McQuillan, and Kim Oliver Vasca. Those individuals here, come on down.
Okay, my name is Deborah, D-E-B-O-R-A, McQuillan, M-C-Q-U-I-L-L-A-N. And my address is 10920 Sunny Meadow Court, San Diego, 92126. All right. All right. I'm talking about the maintenance of work load. And I wanted to talk to you, I have worked for the district now for 15 years. This is my 15th year. And I've spent 12 years as a science teacher, teaching. And then a few years back, decided that there was such a need for, in the special ed department, for people who knew science. I can teach chemistry, physics, biology, the whole realm. So I went back and spent my own nickel, knowing I wouldn't make it die more, to become a special education teacher. Because I thought that was what we really needed in this district. I planned to be a co-teacher in math and science classrooms, but that's really not what happens. Last year, I taught at Kearney SET, which is a four-by-four school. And I taught three different classes, co-taught, in three different classes, in three different departments, in three different subjects, with three different teachers. So there was really no time to do co-teaching. All I was, was a glorified aide in many times. The one class I actually got to co-teach in was chemistry. And only because the principal, the teacher and I made a decision to give up our lunch hours to work together on doing lessons. We saw the failure rate in that class drop from 35% to 12%. So I'm a firm believer that co-teaching really works, when you have a shared time to do planning. This year, the pressure on special ed is even worse. My principal was told, the day before school, teachers reported back that we are now short one teacher. So now, instead of just being a special ed teacher, I'm a general ed teacher. I am teaching, I had two parallel courses that I was supposed to be teaching, which are for the kids who have the strongest needs in science. Instead, they filled those classes up to 36 with general ed teachers. And I'm now the general ed teacher and the special ed teacher in the same classroom. And this is ridiculous. I have students whose IEPs say that they need small group instruction, or need to be in co-taught classes. And by no stretch of the imagination can I be a science teacher and a special education teacher at the same time. I can do either, but not both, at the same time. Our students deserve better than that. We need to give the teachers a chance to have time to work with the co-teachers, and we need to also have time to be the special ed teachers we were hired to be. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Oliver. I live at 3362 Madison Avenue, San Diego, 92116. You know what one of my favorite things to do is? Teach. But how often do you hear that from a teacher? If I could just teach, then everything would be great. 18 years with San Diego Unified, and the last five have been the longest and the hardest. Can you see? I don't even put my hair up anymore, because I got the bride Frankenstein gray for the last five years. It used to be that I knew my students, their interests, their pets, teams they played on, their favorite TV shows. Now, all I know is stuff about them. Are they FBB, SDC, 504, MEC, FEP, proficient gate, or ED? It takes me longer to know their names than it does their CELT scores. Today, I gave my students eight problems for the benchmark test review. We're going to take it on Friday. One student said, he got the test and he said, "Another test? This feels like this is all we do." And I agree. They said, "A test again? Everybody's going around, 'A test again? We just had a test, we just had one.'" It took me 15 minutes to review that, those eight problems with them. And for me to do that every day this week, I'm going to lose an hour of instruction, just getting ready for the benchmark test. I don't have an issue with monitoring the progress of my students, but I do feel that I can do an effective job diagnosing the difficulties of my students through day-to-day classroom assessment, using part of my instruction. We lose hours and hours every year preparing, administering, and scoring and analyzing these tests at the cost of student learning. There's an Australian saying that says, "You don't make hands fatter by weighing them more often." And we don't improve student learning by administering more tests. And because of all these tests, the workload of the teachers is ever-increasing. Standards-based report cards, benchmark tests, technology, when's it going to stop? Probably never. Because education is moving and changing and growing, just like everything else. But I feel like I'm being crushed by the weight of responsibilities that keeps piling on my shoulders. And I feel like my students are being tested more than they're being educated. The maintenance of workload language that we propose to the district is designed to ensure that our workload does not increase beyond the ability to provide the best education for my students. We're asking you to support our proposal, so that we can move ahead with a workload that respects our students and gives our classroom teachers time to teach.
Mick Raven, teacher at Oak Park Elementary School. I live in A130 La Mesa Boulevard, 91941. So as I was writing my two cents about STEA's maintenance workload proposal, I was listening to Good Vibrations by The Beach Boys, and that's the inspiration for this little ditty. I've come here to discuss how the most significant issue of our day plays out here in San Diego classrooms. It's our system of education. Speaking as a parent, taxpayer, and former student, Jackson, Mann, and Crawford were my own school locations. I wear all those hats, but today, I'm here to tell it like it is. In my role as a teacher, I want to appraise you, apprise you of our students' situations. With the district's concerns of a budget shortfall, the cap of 20 students for K through three has met with termination. With an increase in class size by 20%, you'd imagine the district would back off on something, as some form of conciliation. But instead, teachers at every grade level are expected to jump through more hoops, as if more was going to provide any stakeholders with that extra bit of gratification. We tell you, our plates are full, we're buckling under the workload. The response is universally looks of indignation. "You should be grateful you have a job," said one administrator, as if she had drunk from the Kool-Aid reciting the same old incantation. Have we forgotten how the extra workload affects the students? In terms of the truly valuable instruction, all it spells is elimination. But wait, there's more. I can't help but be utterly baffled by City Schools' apparent testing fixation. Yes, assessment is a necessary tool in the process of evaluating whether my students got it, but more than three Scantron sheets and tests a month for third graders is indicative of a policy reevaluation. Back in the day, it was all about students' cognitive abilities, their higher-level thinking skills, a priority placed on qualitative learning versus quantification. Art, music, and PE used to be part of a balanced curriculum. That they are now nearly extinct is a source of great frustration. But now, with the units of study being the order of the day, my students get to learn in lockstep with no tolerance for deviation. Then there's the 25 hours every quarter I could spend on the good stuff, but no. Nobody signed an agreement of standards-based report card, nonproliferation. We teachers had to embrace SBRC by hook or crook. We should be spared something as a form of compensation. If you don't have the cash to reimburse us for the countless extra hours, then delete two meetings each month, or cough up an extra sub-day as a good faith attempt to stem the escalation. And I get the pat on the back, the wink and nudge, because even with all that, I'm still expected to provide a strong level of curriculum differentiation. In order to view this lapse in parity in an objective light, you really don't need to work for the National Aeronautics and Space Administration. Because rocket surgery, this is not, though I may yet need to call a doctor for all my teacher pals in need of cardiopulmonary resuscitation. Everybody I talk with is feeling high levels of stress and anxiety far from the norm. You know it's bad when the best of them routinely question their choice of vocation. My own wife, a better and more committed teacher I've never met, turns to me at 3:00 in the morning, wondering if there's a future in interior decoration. That's when it's time for the folks behind the black curtain to take a step back, grab a magnifying glass and a good light for proper study skill illumination. Because when we're headed right now, where we're headed right now is surely a harbinger of madness of the first order, worthy of a 72-hour hold pending psychiatric evaluation.
Thank you.
Ah, ah, testing. Don't you know what this means? Can't you see that I love you, testing? I love you, testing. Testing, are you married? Do you have any money? Answer the second question twice.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lorraine Joseph, and I represent the San Diego Unified School Psychologists. And I work at Stanley Middle School as a psychologist. And on the heels of the teachers talking about their efforts in terms of helping students, I'm here to speak on behalf of school psychologists who are there to support students and staff. And I'm asking that the board would recognize the week of November 9th through 13th as National School Psychologist Week. I submitted to you all via email, a proposal for a resolution, if you would wish to adopt that. But we are here to let you know that we're here to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koba.
We will craft that resolution, President Jackson.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there Sharita Turner in the audience? All right. Then we'll prepare for the meeting. Represent the colors.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Valencia Park is presenting our student presentation this afternoon. I think they're waiting for 5:30, so we need to get them in the auditorium. We normally go till 5:30, so just give them a minute to get them into the auditorium, please. Teachers, Patrick Garcia and Terri Eng, thank you very much, and we're ready for your presentation with your students.
Good evening, I'm Penny Simmons, Principal of Valencia Park Elementary School. My remarks are going to be very short, because I want you to see our wonderful children, which is what we're all about. But we are from Valencia Park Center for Academics, Drama, and Dance. We are a magnet school. This evening, you're going to see just a small portion of our 50-member showcase troupe. They will be performing a song from last year's all-school musical, Susical. All of the students at Valencia Park participate in theater and dance throughout their daily integrated curriculum. They also have many opportunities, such as this one, to share their hard work throughout the San Diego community. Most recently, at the San Diego Commission on Children, Youth, and Families Day in the Park, and the Arts and Culture Festival at Market Creek Plaza. Over 70 of our students will perform at this year's December nights. Our magnet program integrates dance and drama throughout our regular curriculum to enhance creative thinking and to deepen literary comprehension. And it provides extra dance and drama during and after school. Today, at our school, we have the children of parents who attended Valencia Park Elementary School, and who want their children to have the same quality education experience that they had so many years ago, our group. So the arts are alive and well, at least at Valencia Park. I want you to know that our scores went up. I have to brag about our school, our scores went up 63 points this year.
Congratulations.
So it does show that...
Thank you.
And we met all our AYP goals. It does show that trying to integrate, or not even trying, we are integrating the arts into our curriculum, into our content areas, we have lessons where it's integrated, is making a difference in our children's ability to think and to problem solve, and they're actually having fun doing it, too. I actually love going to work. And did you notice our mimes? We also have a mime troupe, which is very...
Yes, we did. Thank you. Again, congratulations, and thank you Valencia Park. I was so excited about you that I even did you before I even sort of the whole meeting. So, thank you very much, and I'll go ahead and do the right thing now, anyway. Good afternoon, I'm Sheila Jackson, President of the Board. I would like to call, I would like to welcome all present today and call the October 27th, 2009 Regular Meeting to order with all members present, with the exception of Mr. DeBak. And we will approve his absence, I guess, at the next meeting.
No, it's still on the agenda now.
Okay, okay, very good. We hope the discussion and decisions that you observed today would give you a better understanding and appreciation of the important part you play in setting the course of education and taking your unified school district. Agendas today, agendas for today's meeting at both entryways, at the back of the auditorium and at the table, in front of the press table, I'm okay today, y'all. The internet, on the internet at www.handy.net. In addition to the broadcast, our meeting is on ITV Channel 16 and the live webcast. We are also using board docs. The web-based program to enhance governance, reduce the amount of paper we generate, and to provide better communications with the public. The board requests that all members that have pagers and/or cell phones, please turn them off, put them on silent mode in the auditorium, and that if you must leave, leave through the back entrance or the entrance in my left. The board asks for cooperation, complying with the fire code, which does not allow for standing in the back of the room or in the aisles. Please be seated if you're in the auditorium. The board welcomes your comments and writings and during public testimony. Public testimony was heard at 5:00 today, and will be heard at the end of the meeting. Agenda items, we'll be called to speak on during discussion of the agenda items. Testimony is maximum to 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, 10 minutes per opposing viewpoints, and maximum three minutes per speaker. Thirty-four old time is allowed. The board operates under Robert's rules of order, which confer upon the governing body and the audience participation in proceeding in a civil and courteous manner. At this time, the empty presidents' presentations will introduce themselves. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Emma Corio. I am from the Crawford Educational Complex, Community Health and Medical Practices, School of Champs. In our school, it was homecoming week last week, so that went pretty well. And we just, today, we actually recognized the students who improved their scores on the CSTs with at least 20 points, so that was really good, too.
My name's Vince Kumina, from La Jolla High School. We had our first student congress meeting last week, which went well. We discussed issues such as new superintendent and small schools and their effectiveness in our district, as well as the unfinished renovations to school sites. And, let's see, on campus, we're having, well, it's off-campus, but it's going to be, we're having an ASB Beach Cleanup November 7th in Ocean Beach. And we picked that place because we figured there are a lot of clean beaches in La Jolla, and we might as well clean up somewhere else where it needed it. So you guys are all welcome to join us, we'll be there at 10:00.
I think we were interested in your meeting and what you found out about small schools.
Oh, you want me to discuss that?
And, I mean, if you want to share with the board.
Yeah, definitely.
We are very interested in what our students think, so...
Okay, well, we thought, we had a lot of good opinions for the superintendent, and we are thinking, we're looking for a superintendent, probably somebody that we, we're from the district, from our own district, someone that has been here and knows the situation. And also, the quality, what we want to achieve, like ultimately, is for, like, I know the students, a lot of students at school don't understand really the superintendent and their position, and it's not really publicized the whole lot, so we want that to happen as well and take place, so students have more of a voice with that. And we also talked about small schools, and I think the board came to the conclusion that, for the most part, they're effective in our district, as far as being focused on, like, say Crawford, their school of business, where as opposed to in a lot of unfocused schools, like, you go into college undeclared, and a lot of these students from the focused schools know what they want to major in, and already have their future planned out, so they have a head start above us before, just because of the school that they choose. And then...
Yeah, I think we should have a rebuttal opinion from the small school students, although she may not want to rebut any of that.
What we also came up with is that, like at Crawford, we have the four small schools. We have better opportunities at getting internships and more experience in what we want to do. And also, we have better opportunities with scholarships, because we already know what we want, and we have a focus in what we want to do after high school, what we want, the career that we want to pursue. So, yeah, we talked about how we are able to focus and learn more about different careers. Like, I'm in the medical school, and now I know there's not just doctors and nurses, but there's other things that we can go on to, not just into the things that everyone knows about. So that's...
Vincent, you did a great job, but she was sitting right next to you, so... Okay, well, thank you very much. Mr. Koba, would you share the closed session and information report, please?
Thank you, President Jackson. First, to administrative assignments. To interim chief elementary school improvement officer, Kristi Dean. To program manager, instructional resources and materials, Barbara Barron. Switching gears to a few updates about different activities. Last week, I had the honor and privilege to speak with the Association of African-American Educators at their Fall Forum. That was on Thursday at Millennial Tech. We discussed a variety of topics, ranging from the current budget situation to strategies for reducing or eliminating the achievement gap. I've also invited them to be active in our A to G research and conclusions, and they agreed to do so. Another opportunity for grants has emerged here. We have an ongoing dialogue with the Panasonic Foundation. We're exploring opportunities for a multi-year grant that is focused on breaking the links of poverty in some of our most disadvantaged neighborhoods and along some of our most disadvantaged schools. We've invited the Panasonic representation to come out in December for a fact-finding visit to define scope and further possibilities for a multi-year grant, and we will keep the board informed on that. A more immediate pressing need is that of H1/N1 preparations. Clearly, going into the latter part of last week, watching both on a national level and also locally, how things are going with regards to responses to swine flu. Bruni Reinderson, our district relations officer, and I have talked on a number of occasions. We have an H1/N1 task force that's meeting weekly with... We have an H1N1 Task Force that's meeting weekly with Interim Chief Student Services Officer Joel Fultcher, leading that effort. We are trying to stay as closely involved and informed with the County Health Office as possible, and looking at all the different mechanisms for sharing information with parents, students, and staff, and we'll continue to work very hard at that. Two more items very quickly. We have, as of yesterday, commenced a BRACE team, what I call Budget Reduction Alternatives to Conserve Education. It's a staff effort across all of our programs over the next two weeks to intensively review all of our operating budgets, regardless of whether they are on the business side or on the academic side, and be prepared to discuss them in much more detail with you at the November seventeenth workshop. And then lastly, second half of this week, I will be going up to Portland to participate in the annual Superintendent's Conference hosted by the Council of Great City Schools, and I believe President Jackson will be joining me and Mr. DeBeck as well. Look forward to that dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to adopted agenda, please.
Move.
Move in second, please vote. Passes four zero. We have some Board consensus items, which is to minutes and to excuse member absence from Board meetings. Can I get a motion for all of those items?
Approval of both E zero one and E zero two.
Okay.
For a second?
Just a second. He's just kind of quiet right here. Okay. The pass is four zero. Next is the F-items informational report, Mr. Barrera.
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about a process that Dr. Evans and I have been participating in. A group of folks who have been involved in the science education program at the district, both teachers, principals, but also community organizations, businesses, have come together, convened by Bruce Resnick, the Executive Director of San Diego Coast Keeper, over the past couple of months, to do an assessment of the, you know, the state of the district's science education program. We made some very significant gains over the last, really, several years in our, in our science scores, and we developed a very strong foundation, both at the elementary level with the use of the FOST curriculum and real hands-on learning, at the, at the high school level with the development of the Earth Science Program, and a focus on the inquiry-based method of teaching science. And there's a concern, I think, from folks who have been involved both internally within the district and in the community, that given the extraordinary need for our students to be prepared for careers in science, given that San Diego is very much going to be at the center of the development of the green tech and clean tech economy, that our district keeps its focus on a, on a strong science education program as we move forward, understanding that we're in a budget crisis and understanding that we have transition happening, but that we can't lose the infrastructure that we've developed. So, this group is going through a series of meetings and plans to come to our December Board meeting with a, with a set of recommendations and a perspective on how we're doing in our science education program. I was happy to have Superintendent Koba and Mary Canny attend, attend the meeting last night. So it's a group that's working very hard, that's committed to a strong science education program at San Diego Unified, and I look forward to hearing their, their presentation in December.
Yeah, I've been working on a number of items. I've been concerned with the information for parents from regarding the H1N1 virus and, you know, the lack of, I felt outreach that we've had, and sent a memo to staff, but had an overwhelmingly good positive response back. I just want to compliment staff on how hard they're working to, you know, to move that issue forward. One of the things I think we are still concerned about, however, is soap in the bathroom, and that we can't just simply take it for granted, that it's there. I think this is a place where parents can help an awful lot, and I encourage any parent that's watching to just, you know, visit the bathroom of your own gender and make sure that there is soap and water and paper towels in there. In talking with some other districts, the concept of health committees, that parents can possibly, you know, just make sure that the information is up-to-date information on H1N1 is getting to parents. Also, again, you know, helping with, you know, in the classroom with wipes, but making sure we've got enough supplies and such. But I want to compliment staff on their outreach. Just over the last few days, I think it's improved dramatically as we see from what's on the agenda. Also attended the CSBA monthly meeting, and had, I just have to give a compliment again to Mr. Koba, because there were a number of fellow school board members from other districts who were very impressed with your comments at the Achievement Gap Task Force. They were, you know, actually, I thought they were a little too effusive personally, but they were, they were, really did like everything you had to say. So, and then finally, I'm going to end on a light note, and that is the El Cajon Boulevard Boo Parade, which they had. I personally dressed as a chef and had on the side of it, you know, asked me what's cooking in San Diego City Schools, and a lot of people shouted from the side and wanted to know what we had cooking. I was happy to tell them about technology and breakfast in the classroom and great teachers and rising task force, but more than that, it was just plain fun. So I just, for a lighter moment in our duties, would strongly recommend our, our fellow board members participate next year, because it was just, there are a lot of parades out there, but that one was well organized and just plain fun. But getting back one more time, H1N1, very serious. I've talked with, actually pediatrician in another state, it's in Iowa, and it's hitting there very, very hard. We have only seen the tip of this, and I'm very concerned as we go forward that we are as transparent and yet not create a sense of panic, but we can all do something. As these vaccinations, they're going to be a little bit delayed, we need to make sure that we keep our children as safe as possible.
At our last Board meeting, the Board of Education approved a resolution calling for San Diego State University to restore the local admissions guarantee, and we've had various Board members working on that since then. I know that Mr. Barrera was in meeting at Lincoln High School, there was an NAACP meeting, and then, most recently, we had a hearing at Hoover High School. President Jackson was there, and I was also there. And this, this meeting was called as a hearing by Assemblyman Marty Block to look into just exactly what was happening in terms of the elimination of the local admissions guarantee at San Diego State University. And there was a very good turnout of students and other community people there. The basic issue that we're dealing with is that the, the number of local students has gradually been increasing, because as we have improved our crop of graduating seniors, more and more of them have qualified for admission to San Diego State University. And what the university is trying to do is, their current local percentage is fifty-four percent, and they're calling for reducing it to thirty-seven percent next year. One of the conclusions that came out of the hearing was that we at least, at the very least, need to look at rescinding this change for the following school year. Our seniors are right now in the process of applying for colleges, and it's, it's very unfair to be changing it in the, in the middle of the game. So we've had a lot of people from the community who have been talking about this and concerned about this, and we've been very strongly supportive of them. And we've been trying to improve our college prep programs, and we've been doing a good job at it, and we need to make sure that, that our students have access to our local university. And so, as far as the following steps, I think President Jackson will be talking a little bit about some of the next steps that we can take as the Board of Education in support of our San Diego students who would like to go to San Diego State University.
Well, I have a couple of issues, but I'd take that one up first with San Diego State. And I think that it is important, I know we did our resolution, but I think, and I think the Board thinks it's important for us to invest in our students, and San Diego State as well. So what we are willing to do, if the Board is willing to consent to it, and that we'll have a special Board meeting on November ninth at four PM here, if the Board majority wishes to do that. So, Ms. Ward, we have to have maybe a motion for that in order for there to be a special Board meeting.
Focused on the San Diego State.
Yes.
That's so moved.
Yeah.
We would invite all of the, you know, students here, and we would also gather information about the students that we currently have, their goals to San Diego State, or preparing to go to San Diego State that was mostly affected. So I think that it, that would be very important for us to bring the actual students that is affecting together, so. There was a motion?
I'd second it, and I, just to say, I think it's very important to have the directly affected people, to have all of the students from across San Diego, in the city of San Diego who are affected by this, who would be able to attend this, as well as their parents, and the students that are, that currently have benefited from this. And another thing we could do is take this, take verbal statements, but also written statements from everybody here and present those, the Board could present those to San Diego State University.
And I'd also recommend, we advise faculty from San Diego State that are concerned about this issue. You know, there are certainly a number of teachers that understand the importance of local support.
It's been moved and seconded, can please vote?
Okay, and that's for a special Board meeting, November ninth at four PM here in the, in the auditorium. Couple of other items that we really want to highlight really quickly. Mr. Koba was, was there, I'm glad he was there, the Troops of Teachers Award. And the Troops of Teachers is where we have active-duty people that retire from the Navy, as myself, and become classroom teachers. And I think it's absolutely wonderful, some of our strongest teachers, I think, have been, people that have gone through Troops of Teachers, and we recognize individuals who have been teaching at least for ten years that particular evening. So it was great to see those before and after pictures, I'm glad there was none of me there. It would have been quite a bit of laughter. But in addition to that, I also want to commend the communities, City Heights, Mr. Barrera and ourselves, were participating in their neighborhood efforts to solidify their neighborhoods. They've been doing a lot of work, a lot of planning around all areas, education just being one of those, and presented their plans to, to us just last week. And, and it is wonderful when you see the entire community focused, especially focused around their futures, around children, but they're looking at, I mean, theater, arts, the entire gamut, so that was wonderful as well.
And Logan Heights as well.
And Logan Heights, I'm saying, I should have said your, your part, yeah. So that was really, really, really wonderful. But, but on a serious note, I just want to continue to talk about the fact that our district is doing very well. Our state is still having some, some struggles. Their revenues are not coming in, so therefore, we need to keep a tight rein on our funding and our spending. And, and so I just want to make sure that, yes, we are prepared for the H1N1, but I just want to make sure that staff and everyone else knows in the district that we are tightening our bells financially, and we will continue to do so all year long. So even though we balance our O nine-ten budget, we anticipate deficits in the ten-eleven budget, and we need to save for that. So, thank you very, thank you very much.
And I'd like to, I just would like to add to that, we've got, you know, sixteen point six million dollar deficit, and, you know, what I've proposed for the Board, I think...
Trying to get me upset, right?
No, I know, I know, that sixteen point six, just say that and we'll all get upset. But that, you know, I really feel that our agenda, and I felt this way for a long time, that our agenda does not have the information that we need, particularly the single sheet. And so, what, what we've asked as a Board is that, on the right-hand column, that it be, indicate the dollars, the general fund, whether or not this amount has been budgeted. And Mr. Koba added that it should include also human resources impact. So, in an effort to actually be more transparent, not only for the public, but for ourselves, that as we're going through this budget, we will be able to see this more clearly. So I think that's an important change we should all be looking forward to.
Thank you. The next item is FO two, which is ours, Public Meetings for the period of January through June twenty-ten. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes, okay. The next item is the consideration of a replacement for our CSBA delegates and our County Board Association. Dr. Evans?
Yes, I requested that we make a change. I have been serving on that Board for the past year, but due to a scheduling conflict, it's very difficult to attend those meetings, and so, and I also talked to Board Member Catherine Nakamura about the possibility of, of doing that, and she substituted for me last week, so I would just like to make a motion that she be the official replacement to me on that Board.
Second.
Move in second, please vote. I should have said, you want to do that? Too late now?
Yeah, I see.
Passes four zero. Ha ha, okay.
Actually, I want to thank Dr. Evans, I've missed being on the CSBA Board, that's a great group of people, and I'm surprised you're willing to give it up, but I understand you're on the duty, so thank you.
The next item is FO four, and this is where we're going to implement a spending and a hiring freeze. Mr. Barrera?
Yeah, so at our, at our budget workshop last week, we identified that we're looking at a two thousand ten-eleven deficit at this point, our best information at this point, and we know that, that the, that the information is constantly changing, but we could be looking at a two thousand ten-eleven deficit of anywhere between ninety to over a hundred and eighty million dollars, depending on how the, the cuts play out at the, at the state. And, and in order, I believe, for us to be in any position to deal with the, with the deficit of that magnitude, we need to start now, and we need to control our spending this year, in the nine-ten year. We identified at, at our budget workshop that in our general fund, we have approximately two hundred and twenty million dollars left in our nine-ten budget that has yet to be spent or that has yet to be committed in terms of salaries and benefits. And I think that we need to focus in very closely on controlling that remaining two hundred and twenty million dollars. And if we can do a good job over the course of the rest of this year, of really reining in our spending, which, you know, means being very serious about, you know, postponing, filling vacancies where, where they occur, postponing spending unless it's, it's critical. If we can, if we can do a good job over the course of this year, then I think that's the, that's the one thing that we can control to position ourselves to, to mitigate what is likely to be a devastating set of choices for the ten-eleven year. So I know that a spending and a hiring freeze can be done in a way that makes the district very difficult to operate, but I believe that when we instituted a spending and hiring freeze in the, in the early spring last year, I think it did help us, you know, bring our actual spending below our, our, you know, budgeted projections at the time, and it helped us balance our nine-ten budget. So, I'm moving that we direct Superintendent Koba to implement spending and hiring freeze for the remainder of this year, with the obvious caveat that where we've got critical needs that, that have to be filled, and where we've got expenses that we simply can't do without, that the Superintendent will have the discretion of, of making recommendations to approve, you know, those, those items. But, but it, what we're really doing here is we're sending a clear message through the Superintendent to all of our departments that we can't, we cannot afford to spend at budget. You know, we've been talking about, you know, sixteen million dollars over budget, we need to come in significantly under budget this year if we're going to have any hopes of, of surviving next year. So I move to direct Superintendent Koba to implement a spending.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned a second. We do have public comments. The buzz you hear is someone didn't necessarily check their cellphone, so if you could just recheck your cellphone and make sure that it's, it's off, so it won't affect our sensitive system. Speakers, Elaine Sabeti, Mike Lance, Ethel Larkins, and Glenn Delger.
Hi, good evening.
Elaine Sabeti, speaking on behalf of OTBS CSEA. I too am concerned about the budget. It's troubling. But I also have concerns about this hiring freeze and the way that it's already been implemented. I have personal knowledge of two people who tried to apply for library assistant positions last week, and they were told that there was currently a hiring freeze in the district. So I find it interesting that the item is on the agenda today, but the practice has already been implemented in the district. We still have ten elementary schools with no staffing in their libraries, we have six secondary schools with no library technician, and nine secondary schools with no teacher librarian. So I want to know what you think is critical, what is critical staffing? And I would like to see the Board stand by its commitment to open every library in the district for at least part of the day. I'd submit to you that staffing these libraries is critical, to having their doors open and to keeping them open. I think all of our students deserve equal access to the rich literature and the numerous print and non-print resources housed in our libraries, libraries that were built with the hard-earned tax dollars of San Diego citizens, and stocked with books purchased by those same hard-working citizens. Please don't freeze out our kids, don't freeze them out of their libraries by... Don't freeze them out of their libraries by freezing the hiring of library staff.
Hi. My name is Mike Lance, 9236 Lake Hill in Santee. I'm not against the hiring, hiring freeze and also the spending, but I am against when they go ahead and say we're going to have a hiring freeze, and then someone comes up and says, "I need a new," I'm just talking from my own area, a buyer or something like that. The rest of us in our lower departments are sucking it up and ask to do more. Well, if we're going to hire a hiring freeze, I want to see it straight across. I don't want to see money coming out for some high-paying $100,000 person when we can't even hire somebody at $30,000 for a year. A worker, I want the worker bees to be hired before we get the hiring, big supervisors, $120,000. That really irks me when I see that happen quite often. Also, when you're talking about your spending, it's the types of spending that I see happening more often. We have quite a bit of the direct spending that directly comes from the sites and goes directly to the sites, which kind of tries to go around all the different areas that we are, especially our area where we're working, so try to bypass us. Years ago, we tried to save money by having a buying, buyers buying directly to companies like Weyerhauser and big corporations and buying large bulks of, and you mentioned, Catherine, tonight about having paper towels. Okay. Which is saving money? Having a big bulk amount that you can have a constant supply in a warehouse, have access to it all the time? Or buying maybe a small amount each time from Waxy and delivering every week and having a truck drive out there? You can't tell me that's saving money. If you buy bulk, you are saving money. Our paper, we use thousands and thousands of reams of paper, and I cannot get anybody from our departments to go back to buying directly from Weyerhauser. I want our department. I don't want to take on that task. I think our department, we have buyers, we have people who need to look back into that. We used to do that. We had paper towels. We had soap. We had that, all that. I've been here for 33 years. I've just watched that warehouse just crumble and be taken over by other departments. I want to see us look efficient and work efficient and buy and save money and be efficient. So on the spending wise, that's what I want to see our money be. The $6 million, and you were talking also about how we spend money sometimes foolishly. One of the places where we spent money is like in the buses, where we spent $6 million for first student. And then we had to turn around and buy buses anyway. We don't even have a lot of equipment that we need right now, and I'm afraid that we're not going to be able to buy it. Power jacks, we got one that's on the dock. If it breaks down, again, we're down without it. I was just getting ready to talk. I came back from vacation today, saw this, I wanted to speak on it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. President Jackson and Mr. Koba. Ethel Larkins, Chapter President, OSS 724 Support Services, I'm speaking against this because we have, we weren't given proper notification of the hiring freeze. And as it's been said, as the previous speaker has said, it's already been implemented, and you guys are now going to vote on it. So you're kind of send, and also you're kind of sending mixed messages because you're wanting to put in an interim management position to the tune of $100,000, and, you know, we're not looking at the people that are the wheels and nuts and bolts that work closest to the classroom. As Lance, Mike Lance just spoke on, we have people that are working right there directly with the kids, and we can't get those jobs filled. So that's why 724 is objecting on this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Degler. Madam President, Board Members. Mr. Koba, I've met you all before. I'm here to speak against the hiring freeze. I'm here to speak about the workload. With early retirement, we went down 67 positions at OSS, all right? With the new food service cards, which I was a part of, all right, we had to hire a lot of people there. Now you're asking to put steamers in the kitchens, and you're asking the electricians to work almost endless hours, all right? With the H1N1, there's been a lot of illness. You want us to stay home, all right, if we feel sick, all right, so that we don't get everybody else sick. Right now, we're 50 positions short. The work at M&amp;O doesn't get any lighter. It gets, it gets more and more and more with the implementation of, you know, millennial tech. We worked over the summer. There are huge projects going on, all right? In order to do the projects and then in order to do the maintenance, you need the staff in order to do that. The reorganization has boosted a lot of journey-level positions up into leadership positions. And in order to fill those journey-level positions, you have to take the sort of non-skilled positions and move those up to journey-level positions. Then you have nobody to actually do the work. You've filled all of the management positions, you've filled middle-management positions, but you've filled none of the working positions. And if you don't fill those, you can't get any of the work done. And it's plain and simple. Who is going to do the work? So it's a decision that you have to make, and I understand that we get the phone calls so, and they don't get to you until they get serious, and then we, we're more reactionary than we are proactive. And we'd like to be proactive, we just don't have the force in order to do that. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very, thank you very much. Let me comment. Certainly, we appreciate your comments, and I think our direction to staff was that we would fill essential billets. This is not so that we can fill all the managerial billets and then not, not fill the working people. We know that the people that are doing the work, we have to have them on board, and so we hope that Mr. Koba will look at that and make sure that we are making sure that the places that need to be filled are filled. But the concern that we have, and we have to really monitor this because while we want to acknowledge that most people stay within their budget, some people aren't. And we need to make sure that that isn't happening because it sounds kind of easy if you say, "Oh, I'm only, you know, $10,000 over my budget." But when you have 200 schools and several departments, all that money adds up. And so we cannot afford for anyone to be over budget. We can't afford also for people just to be hiring extra people. People that are necessary, yes. But sometimes, you know, walk around and they say, "Oh, this is a new person." I'm like, "Where this person come from?" "We hired him." "Well, why are you hiring that person?" So we need to make sure that we only hire the people that are essential to our mission and that we stay within our budget or even less than our budget. And I think that has to be the message very loud and clearly right now. We have no idea what will happen at the state level. We have some speculations, but certainly if the state does not receive money, okay, if the state does not receive taxes, they cannot give us what they don't have. And some people believe, well, they will always fund education, but they can't fund education if they do not have the money. And I need for people to really internalize, you know, believe that because a lot of people just don't because before we were always so fat and happy. We're not fat and happy. The state is not fat and happy. The state has no money, and if they don't have any money, we can't get 40% of zero. That's zero. Okay? Mr. Barrera, please.
Yeah, and just to, you know, kind of reiterate some of the points that President Jackson is making, I think maybe the most striking number that came out to me in the budget workshop last week was the fact that now in San Diego Unified, we're at under $4,000 per student per year. That's shocking. At $6,500, which is where we would be, you know, if it hadn't been for the last two years of cuts, we're one of the lowest-funded, we know, one of the lowest-funded states in the nation in terms of our commitment to public, public schools. But at less than $4,000 per kid, we need to wake up in the state and recognize that we are right now currently shortchanging our future. There's just no other way to describe it. And then to be facing up to, you know, another hit of the scale that, you know, is possible, I mean, at what point, you know, do we, do we just, you know, cry out frankly as a, as a group of citizens in this state that enough is enough? But we also have to take our responsibility here at the district and do what we can. And I respect OSS taking a position in opposition to this hiring freeze tonight, but I think more important is the continued commitment that OSS has, you know, demonstrated about stepping up and being proactive and being part of the solution. Frankly, OSS has been talking about position control before, you know, anybody else in this district was talking about position control. So we need your participation as we go forward over the course of this year and figure out, you know, how we, how we manage this year with an eye on, you know, the fact that we're going to need to, to face up to, you know, something potentially devastating for the 10-11 year. So I respect, you know, where you're at on this issue, but again, continue to, you know, to ask for your, your participation in, in dealing with this crisis.
Dr. Evans?
Yes. I just want to plagiarize from President Jackson, the, when she says, "We don't have money, we don't have money, we don't have money." I'm not usually a doomsday kind of person, but this is a very, very difficult situation that we are facing. Last year, we faced a very difficult situation. We succeeded in balancing the budget. We succeeded in keeping most of our teachers. We have reports later in the day that we're going to have, that we do have on hand the supplies and materials we need to run our schools. But I think we really need to get out to the public the intensity of this. When Mr. Barrera was mentioning, you know, it could be $90 million short, it could be $180 million short next year, it's kind of hard to understand what is $100 or $200 million out of a budget a little over a billion dollars. But one way to look at it in terms of our funding is that if we had to cut out $100 million from our budget, if we just turned away 20,000 students, we could balance our budget. If we turned away 40,000 students, we could balance the budget if we take a $200 million hit. Now, I'm just giving you those rough, rough figures, but just to show the gravity of the situation. You know, we look at different things to cut in, and every single area, one place that we are not going to cut is the fact that we need to educate 132,000 kids in San Diego. And we cannot say 20,000 or 40,000 students are not going to be educated. So this is, this is a real challenge. There are really devastating choices, which is why we are trying to look at this as early as we possibly can. And with this spending and hiring freeze, we are not saying we are not going to provide essential services, but for the dollars we spend, we are going to say, "Is this absolutely necessary?" And whether it is spending or hiring, what we save this year is going to make a big difference in next year. One person that we hire this year could result in two layoffs next year. One, one item that we not purchase could result in two less items next year. So we're really trying to take, look at this very early and to preserve what we have to do what we absolutely need to do. So I do want to reassure people that we are not going to cut back on essential services, but we are going to cut wherever we can. And I really appreciate the, also, the unions that have stepped up and really participated in helping us to find solutions. As Mr. Barrera mentioned about the Science Task Force, other groups that are working that in spite of the budget crisis, we are still working on promoting excellent education in San Diego, and we will continue to do that even though these times are very difficult. So I know this is a difficult thing to do, but I think it's very important that we do it.
Mrs. Nakamura, please.
Yeah, I think this is important for every board member to weigh in on. It's not, I guess the phrase we're all looking for is, you know, a penny saved is a penny earned, and that, you know, this money we save this year will help us with, you know, the budget reductions next year. It's, it is a crisis, and I'm glad all of us are speaking so seriously about this. You know, the budget presentation that we had last week was very well done. The charts and graphs were irrefutable. I was really pleased to see so many parents in the audience listening. I think it, it just added another dimension to the conversation that sometimes, I think too often, is not, is not present in this room in particular. But I do want to say that as we're talking about essential items, that is schools first. And I am concerned about the library tax. I think that the schools, we have to maintain our commitment to funding schools, and a vacant position at a school is not a vacant position that we should be taking when it impacts the children's education directly. This is really, it sounds, it's difficult to fathom, but I think if you think of it in terms of discretionary income, we only have, we have so many funds that we have to commit in public education that are committed to salaries, things that we have to pay for absolutely unquestionably, or that are funded through grants and have nothing to do with this budget crisis. But that we have a very narrow wedge of discretionary income, and, and that's, that wedge has become even narrower. And if we don't do something right now, next year it could very well be nonexistent. You know, my goal, and what I want to see is, as I always say, is a balanced budget within a balanced curriculum. I want people in their jobs that we need to do their jobs, but also the support staff that, and the materials for people to do their jobs. I've said before that if, you know, a science speaker breaks in the middle of the year, you know, nobody's, is that going to get replaced? Are we going to have materials replaced for teachers? Or are people just going to muddle through? I think that's an important question. And I'd also like to remind, you know, this may sound like I'm demanding that we pay for everything, but extracurricular activities, as we are arguing about this San Diego State and we're fighting so valiantly and trying to make a point with San Diego State that 30 days' notice is not enough notice for these kids, and while we're sympathetic to San Diego State with their balanced, their need to balance their budget as well, I want us to also keep in mind those extracurricular activities that kids use for their college applications that separate a student from, you know, a student with a 3.5 leadership positions that they've taken in extracurricular activities and not just eliminate those. You know, it's, if you were on the debate team, if you were in journalism, if you were an editor, if you were, you know, there are a number of things that people participate in that go on their college applications. Those aren't frills. Those are people's futures, and they matter. So I'd like the rest of my colleagues, I'd like to thank the unions for their participation. We're going to need to, everybody pull in together, and I think it's important that you did step forward. So thank you very much.
Ask that we go ahead and vote now.
You know.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go on public hearing for the matter of certifying our sufficiency textbooks and instructional materials. Mr. Koba?
Thank you, President Jackson. This is our annual requirement to conduct a public hearing and seek approval through resolution to certify that we have sufficient textbooks, textbooks and/or instructional materials by ed code. Eighth week following the opening of school, the board is supposed to have reviewed and approved such a certification.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, so moved.
Moved in second. Is anything else? No questions? Please vote. The next is the certification of provisions of standards-aligned instructional materials. Mr. Koba?
Thank you, President Jackson. And similar to the certification of textbooks and instructional materials, there is also an ed code requirement for the certification of standards-aligned instructional materials indicating the district has provided each pupil with a standards-aligned textbook or basic instructional materials.
I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved, second. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Okay. That passes 4-0. The next item is the annual developer fee report for year 2008-9. Mr. Koba?
This is a requirement that we report the year behind us for 2008-9 for all of the accounting of facilities fees that we receive and use within our general fund budget. This is submitted by the Chief Financial Officer Team, and it's for information only.
Okay. But my, my item here says it's supposed to be actually just information?
Yes.
Okay. Then I remove that. Okay. Information. We can, it is information? Okay. We'll move, is a motion to accept this report then?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion, please, board members?
I'm moved to accept the report.
Okay. Have a motion, in second, please.
Second.
Removed in second. Any other questions or comments? Please vote. We will now move to the I, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. We have-
Any other questions or comments? Please vote. We will now move to the I superintendent's consent agenda. We have speakers. We have a speaker on IO four, which is Mike Lance, and a speaker on IO four, which is Roger Canfield, Jr.
My name is Mike Lance. My address is on record. On the ratification of the certification and classification personnel action, I came before you one of the time regarding some of the reports. And I didn't, I mean, I will get with you later and find the total results. I didn't quite find the ending results on that, Mr. Kober, on what happened with the different names that were listed on that last report that I thought I saw there was a discrepancy in the report.
It's one guy, yes. The end result was--
Didn't result on the other one? On the other report?
Was that he was promoted. So in one sheet, he was there and he was being eliminated, but he was in that position. And next sheet, he was being promoted to a position.
Okay, but it showed that he was holding to a position. That's why I was kind of confused on that, and I don't know how that report will end up turning out. I'm sorry.
We did verify that it was a promotion and that it was validated by HR.
Okay. I also saw the reports today, and I don't, I apologize, I left the paperwork on my desk. I believe it's on page thirty-six at the last, the bottom of page thirty-six, the gentleman who's on that item. The year on his, it says a promotion on there, it says 'oh seven'. If you look on your computers, I don't have it. I'm sorry. But that gentleman has been working in that position all these years. He's been working there for almost thirty years. I don't understand what is there meaning of promotion or something on that individual. I know, I apologize. Again, like I said, I wanted to get here earlier and talk to you a little more about it. But it's page thirty-six.
Six, okay.
And I won't give you the person's name. I don't want to do that. But it's, is date on, if you look on the right-hand side, it says 'oh seven' instead of 'oh nine' on that gentleman's name on the right-hand side, where it says the year, year date, seven, I said, I think it's seven thirteen oh seven. But anyway, I don't, he did, I talked-- Excuse me, the one on-- It shows him a truck driver? The bottom of thirty-six, I see. It's listed nine twenty-four, two thousand nine. Maybe it's on thirty-seven. I'm sorry, is thirty-six or thirty-seven? What type of position? Truck driver. Oh, there, yes, thirty-seven. Okay. Seven one, two thousand seven. Right. That gentleman has been currently on that position for thirty-some years, thirty-three years. I talked to him today, and I'm just kind of wondering what kind of action was being taken on his job, and he would like to know that, too. Because--
I think--
He's already there. I don't know if that's another error that I happened to come across, but he doesn't understand why it was on there, and he's not being promoted, he's not being terminated, he's not being all, any of the things that's stated in this classification thing. So I just wanted to have you take a look at that also.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Madam President, board members. My name is, oh, my name is D. Roger Canfield. I live at forty-three oh four View Place. I'm a custodian, returning from an on-the-job injury that happened back in ten-two oh eight. I've seen four doctors to have my claim accepted by the insurance company, which is, the name is Skirma, and by the district, which is one of the two, one of the same. I was released to go back to work on nine twenty-two oh nine. I had some restrictions, which is way over the limit of what my, which is way over the limit of what my standard job classifications is. Okay. And yet I've yet to be able to be placed at a site. And Skirma and the district is still, I mean, I'm sitting at home, not being utilized. I'm ready to go back to work, be put back to work. And yet the Skirma, which is the insurance company and the district, is trying to, tried to have a meeting with me where I did not have representation, tried to basically discriminate against me because I am a job steward. And I don't have any restrictions. I'm trying, like I said, I'm ready, willing, and ready to go back to work. Please help me find another site. I mean, I've been going on for like almost a month now without having a site to be at. And I mean, how am I supposed to be utilized? By sitting at home? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll look into that. Thank you. Okay. Board members, are you wish to put any agenda items?
Number twenty-three, please.
I twenty-three.
I wasn't interested in, I was interested in I zero five, but they've already pulled it, so.
Well, no, it's not pulling until you pull it. I zero five?
No, it's been withdrawn by staff.
Oh, yes, I remember that. And Ms. Barrera, anything else? Okay, can we get a motion for the rest of those items, please?
Read minds, Mr. Kober.
I move that we approve the remainder of the items.
Second. Okay, please vote. Okay, that passes four zero. Dr. Evans, I twenty-three, please.
Just one moment here. Just one second here. I just wanted to point out this contract again because we approve a lot of contracts that are up to a certain amount, and this one was up to 1.2 million dollars. And I know we've discussed on other things which, you know, including fuel and other supplies that are certainly absolutely necessary, so that the up to is not as much of a problem there. I just want to make sure that the administration is being very careful in this area when we're approving a contract that goes up to a certain amount because I certainly think that when we look at what is absolutely essential, I'm not saying it's not important, but critically essential, I would certainly think that painting is in the gray area.
Yes, and so just so you know, I think one of our memos that came to us late because I did ask them to provide us with how much we actually use in the previous years. And so I didn't, I know that question was asked, and so that may help.
Okay, so I see that was, okay, previously 280 and, or 309,000, so they weren't going over. But I just know if the superintendent could respond in terms of how that's going to be managed?
And if I could, I talked to cabinet last week after we had this discussion, and I see Art Canby in the audience as well. So Art, I'm using as an accountable person to kind of manage contracts now. We want to know, we don't want to see the not-to-exceeds. We want to see a valid budget number. I'd like to see historical data. You know, if it was 1.2 million projected, what did we spend last year? Let's get as close to target as we can and not, you know, overinflate a requirement or provide capacity for it. So I've talked to the cabinet about eliminating the not-to-exceeds, getting to a historical number based on either actual or validated need into the future. So we would like to get away from this.
Good, okay.
Thank you. Entertained a motion?
Didn't we already do, oh, on the side?
I move to approve without understanding.
Okay. Is there a second?
I did.
Very good. Please vote. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda items. Do we have any more public speakers? The board will return to closed session at this particular time. Thank you for your attendance at the meeting tonight.
It's on record.